I am here, thank you.
Commissioner Dillon?
Here.
Commissioner Noble? Commissioner Conley? Commissioner Marr?
Here.
Commissioner LaRue?
Here.
All right, we have enough to run. Perfect. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. We obviously encourage public participation. If you're addressing the Planning Commission, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, limit your comments to three minutes, please. And please do not include any topic that is on the agenda. You'll have time to speak to that topic when we approach that agenda item. And then for any quasi judicial hearing on the agenda, any affected person may become a party to this proceeding, can be entitled to present evidence at the hearing, including sworn testimony of witnesses and relevant exhibits and other documentary evidence to cross examine all witnesses by filing a notice of intent to be a party with the Community Development Director, not less than five days prior to the hearing. And we do have one item on our agenda that is a quasi judicial piece of business. So at this time, is there any public comment on an item that is not specifically on our agenda? Perfect, okay. The next item will be the approval of the minutes. I'm assuming everyone here has reviewed the minutes and they'll look for a motion to approve or modify as you see fit.
A motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Thank you, Mr. LaRue. Anybody have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Not here.
Sorry, Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. The minutes are approved, thank you. So our first item of new business is ordinance 2024-09, Appendix D, Johns Pass Village Activity Center zoning. Who's taking that one?
I will take that. Let me just make this a little larger. So all of you on the Planning Commission should be familiar with the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. Just as a little bit of a background, the BOC adopted 2023-01 and 2023-02 back in March of 2024. So those two ordinances updated the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan and the Future Land Use Map to Activity Center in the Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. So within a year, we are required to amend our zoning, our land development regulations. So with that, there will be multiple ordinances that you will see tonight. There's actually four. This is the first one. So ordinance 2024-09 creates Appendix D, which is the new Johns Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards, and it follows the special area plan that was approved back in March. And this has been brought to Planning Commission as well as BOC multiple times. This is the main document that goes through what's allowed, what the development standards will be. It's zoning categories for that Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. And it's broken down into the six character districts. And each character district has uses, accessory uses, special exception uses, building site area requirements, setbacks in each district, maximum building heights. And it follows all the other zoning categories. A document that we brought, those on the dais for all the commissioners, and there's a few copies in the back of the room as well. A few amendments that staff is recommending to be put into the recommendation from Planning Commission. It would be on page five of the ordinance. So let me scroll up. So under the special exception uses, for three Johns Pass Resort, this open rooftop and terrace uses. And on this document that was on the dais, it's highlighted the changes. So instead of just stating open rooftop and terrace use, just making that a little bit more specific, to open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use. And so you'll see that in Johns Pass Resort, low intensity mixed use district as well as the transitional district. Just making sure that that is specific in those areas. And then the other amendment that staff is recommending is on page nine of the ordinance. Let me see what page that is in. Is page 18 of the packet. And I can zoom up in here and make it a little bit more clear for everyone else watching. So the heights are measured from the design flood elevation to the eve line of the building. And then we are recommending to include the use of stories. So here in Boardwalk, it would say 34 feet, not to exceed two stories over ground floor parking or commercial. And then down in Commercial Core, that would read 34 feet, comma, not to exceed two stories over ground floor commercial. Here on B would be not to exceed three stories over ground floor commercial. And C, 55 feet, not to exceed four stories over ground floor commercial. Johns Pass Resort, the 44 feet, not to exceed four stories over ground floor parking. B, let's see, 55 feet, not to exceed five stories over ground floor parking. The low intensity mixed use, 34 feet, not to exceed three stories over ground floor parking. Five, traditional village, the 34 feet, not to exceed two stories over ground floor commercial. B, 44 feet, not to exceed three stories over ground floor commercial. And then in transitional, you would have an A and a B. So A is west side of Gulf Boulevard, not to exceed four stories over ground floor parking. And then B would be east side of Gulf Boulevard, not to exceed four stories over ground floor parking or commercial. And a lot of these numbers came from us looking at what's on the ground as well as referring back to the 2002 master plan and what was proposed in the master plan in these districts. And so we corresponded with both of those things. The master plan really reflects the same numbers that we have, the story numbers that we have written in there for a recommendation.
All right, makes sense to me.
And besides that, there's no other changes from the document that was in your packet. I know that you have seen this multiple times. So this goes over floor area ratio and pervious surface ratio, the alternative temporary lodging use standards, which requires a development agreement. And then we also have design standards and guidelines which states that if you, if someone is applying for a planned development rezoning as well as using the alternative temporary lodging use standards, they must conform to all of the standards and guidelines in this Section D 113. And then we also have recently given from the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, which was on the dais as well. Andrew, was there copies at the back or?
Yep, I put some copies in the back.
Okay. There's some copies at the back as well. So this is a support document just to show what those standards look like. It's a little easier to read than just reading through the ordinance or the Appendix D. So it shows the uses, accessory uses, special exception uses, and then each character district, those setbacks that we talked about that are listed within the setbacks in the code. And then just a visual of what that looks like realistically.
Are these tables somehow incorporated or is this just for reference?
This is just for reference. This is Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. This isn't, this wouldn't be adopted. This is just a reference guide, something that is a little easier to, for the public to look through and read and see and visualize.
I've got a question. In terms of adding these open rooftop and balcony issues, so is that going to allow it or if they have it, they have to go for a special exception?
So they're already allowed. Right now, they're allowed just by right. They don't have to go through any special process. This requires a rooftop or say if, not in the traditional village, but in other areas, say if they, if you look on the screen, if a property owner wanted to put a restaurant or something on this like open elevated terrace area and say you're next to a duplex, next to a condo, you would have to get that special exception. Right now, it's just a given right. So this just allows property owners their surrounding to be notified, come to the public hearing and speak if they're in support, not in support. Also, staff as well as a special magistrate would have to review 10 criteria. One of them being, is it, does it match the character of the neighborhood? Does it fit into the neighborhood? So I don't think that we have that list in front of us, but we could always pull that up as well.
Well, that's okay. I mean, because that was one of the things I believe in some of the meetings. Many of the people were concerned about the rooftop. And as a good example, Cambria. You know, it's noisy. So it's now going to be restricted before you can do that.
You would have to go to a public hearing to the special magistrate.
And for clarity though, that's if it's accessible by more than one unit owner.
Yes.
Right? If it's a townhouse or a condo that has a balcony and the only access to that is through that condo unit, it doesn't have to get a special exception. But if it's a public, you know, more than one person has access to it, then it's a special exception use.
So that goes for condos? That goes for hotels? That goes to, you know, any commercial use as well?
Right, like the Cambria.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I didn't ask for public comment. I wanted her to add our changes into it. So at this time, I will ask for public comment. If anyone has any comments on item A here, this ordinance 2024-09, please come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have your three minutes.
Tom Edwards, District 1 resident. The only concern I have is with the open rooftop activity is, is there a way of putting something in there that there would not be any live music or amplified music? If it's one of those places that are within maybe 500 feet of residents, as you know, sound carries with the wind and everything like that. And some consideration should be given to that. And I understand that you would have to go before a special magistrate or my suggestion was the city commission if they were asking for an exception. But there, something could be written in there that there wouldn't be any amplified or live band music because it would disturb the neighborhood. You've got a 300-foot limit and that's not enough. That's all I have.
Perfect, thank you. Anyone else? Good? Okay. That'll be the end of the public comments then. To the Planning Commission, any questions for the city? And I'll ask Mr. Trask or whomever, is there a way to address that topic?
So we already have a noise ordinance in effect and we can enforce it through a noise ordinance. I'm not sure city staff has had the opportunity to go through the process to determine whether or not it's appropriate in adding it in these sections. I would leave that to Jenny to explain what they have done to address that because I'm not aware of that.
So what we've talked about internally because we had that comment before is that the noise ordinance, the alcohol ordinance, isn't there another one?
Accessory structure.
Accessory structures will all go to the BOC workshop and the next BOC workshop to discuss.
Okay.
Implementing that especially in this Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. If this is adopted or when this is adopted, we will have to change other sections in the code to address the different character districts and make sure that everything is in line. So those are the two. Really, the alcohol section in the code as well as the noise will be going to the next BOC workshop.
Okay, so it would be too cumbersome to put it in this particular area?
Yes. You'd technically, you would usually have, if there's something that has to do with noise, you would look at the noise ordinance, not necessarily the zoning. So that's why we felt like it's more appropriate to address it in the noise section in the code.
And the noise ordinance would reference the certain character districts?
Yes, we could talk about the zoning districts in the areas. So this would all be essentially C1, but then you have the character districts within it.
Yeah, so any modifications there would be a prerequisite and then we would then adopt something that points back to that, correct? Or not at all? They would just point to the zoning code?
Yeah, so it would be, something with noise related would be more appropriate within the noise section in the code.
Yeah, I get it, yeah.
And so that will be addressed and talked about. And that's on the list for the next BOC workshop.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? You know what comes next?
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-09, Appendix D, Johns Pass Village Activity Center zoning.
Development standards.
Development standards.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion to approve ordinance 2024-09, Appendix D, Johns Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards. Do we have a second?
I just want to make sure before we get to that second that it includes the recommendations that have been provided to you tonight on the dais. So it's different than the packet. So I think the motion should include those additional changes.
Thank you.
Fair enough. Including the recommended changes presented today.
Thank you. Okay, so the amended motion is to recommend approval of ordinance 2024-09, Appendix D, Johns Pass Village Activity Center Development Standards, amended as presented. Now I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussions about the motion itself? If none, we'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. Thank you. Onto item B, ordinance 2024-10, C1, and refer to Appendix D. At this time, I'll ask for any public commentary on this particular ordinance proposal. If anyone would like to speak to this one, please step forward to the microphone. Seeing none? City staff, you're up.
Okay, so this is the second ordinance in our four ordinances with Johns Pass Village Activity Center and implementing it in the land development regulations. So here, we are going to rename the C1 zoning district to Johns Pass Village Activity Center and then refer back to that Appendix D that was just recommended approval. And then talking about the development standards are all in Appendix D and removing everything else in that zoning district. Pretty straightforward.
Anyone have any questions for city staff?
So this is reverting everything back to the ordinance that we just approved?
Yes, so all of essentially C1 zoning district, which is now tourist commercial, that would turn into the Johns Pass Village Activity Center. So if the rezoning goes forward, then everything would be rezoned, the C1 zoning district, and then all the development standards, it would refer back to that Appendix D, what we just saw, with the character districts and everything that was listed in the Appendix D.
So the whole area is going to become C1 and then within C1 are going to be the six designations?
Yes.
Got it. Any other questions for the staff? All right. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-10, C1, referring to Appendix D.
I second it.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Anybody have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's call the roll, please.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is ordinance 2024-11, rezoning of Johns Pass Village Activity Center area to C1. This is a quasi judicial matter and I'm going to ask Mr. Trask to step in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to need to go over a couple of things based upon the direction of your code. So I'm going to give you a summary of the application. Ordinance 2024-11 rezones the entire Johns Pass Village Activity Center to C1 Johns Pass Village Activity Center zoning district. The future land use in the Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan is Activity Center and designated Activity Center within the countywide plan map. All three plan maps and plans/regulations, the countywide plan, Madeira Beach Comprehensive Plan and Madeira Beach Land Development Regulations will be consistent with Johns Pass Village Center plan. That's our special area plan once ordinance 2024-11 is adopted. The burden of proof in this matter is set forth in Section 2-10B. I just want to read that to you. If the quasi judicial matter is rezoning of land, once the city satisfies the burden of proof at the hearing, the burden shall shift to the other party to show by a greater weight of the evidence that maintaining the existing zoning classifications accomplishes a legitimate public purpose. In such event, the rezoning application shall be denied. The order presentation tonight will be first by the city and then by any property owners that are having their properties rezoned. And then we have one affected party who has filed a notice of intent and that is Kathleen Bearman. Is she here?
Yes.
Okay. I need to go ahead and read those quasi judicial procedures for you. This is a quasi judicial proceeding where the Planning Commission acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At this hearing, it is not the board's function to make law but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi judicial proceeding, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant, which is the city here, has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find you're in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial and relevant evidence the hearing demonstrates the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this point, I need to ask everyone on the board whether or not they have received any expedited communications with anyone about this matter? No?
Nope.
Any conflicts of interest that anyone needs to disclose? No? And at this point, I need to swear on the witnesses, anyone that's going to speak on this matter? If you could stand up, raise your right hand, I need to swear you an oath. Anyone that's going to speak? Ma'am, are you going to speak?
Kathy.
No? Okay. You swear that testimony about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. So at this point, we'd ask city staff to go ahead and make the presentation.
Okay, so this is the third ordinance for Johns Pass Village.[1636.14] So this is rezoning the Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. You can see the current zoning in this map on the screen. And so this whole area proposing to rezone to C1 zoning district. And just like we talked about earlier, the C1 zoning district would then refer to the Appendix D that has all the development standards for all the six character districts. So although it looks like just one zoning district, in that Appendix D, it really has all of those design, development standards for each character district. And that is, that is all I have. They all kind of work together, so.
So the heavy lifting's already been done in the first, first go around, right?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for city?
Okay, if there's no questions, is anyone from the end or the affected person does not wish to make a presentation, I assume?
Did you not wish to say anything, Kathy? Okay, okay.
Anyone else from the public like to speak on this agenda item? Nope? Okay, then it's back to the planning commission for consideration.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to discuss about this? Or any questions for the city? We have been through this a bit, haven't we? All right, then I guess we'll be.
I was going to say, the only comment I have, it's been a long time coming.
It has been a lot of work. They've, they've put a lot of work into this, along with Pinellas County's staff, too. A lot, a lot going on here. All right, at that point, we'll look for a motion.
Well, I'll ask Tom, is there any specifics? I mean, other than, shall I just read that whole thing?
My suggestion, well, first of all, you've got a staff recommendation. If, you can read your motion as being a move to approve staff recommendation, or you could read that recommendation into the motion, however you'd prefer. That would be what the city would be looking for.
I make a motion to accept the staff recommendation on Ordinance 2024-11, rezoning Johns Pass Village Activity Center.
To C1 Johns Pass Village Activity Zoning District, correct?
Yes, to C1 Johns Pass Village Activity Center Zoning District.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion to approve, and do I need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Didn't seem to be a lot of discussion needed, so we'll call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Mar?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes. All right, that was a long time coming. Thank you for all the hard work on that, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Trask, for your guidance. The next item on the agenda is Ordinance 2024-12, C2 to reserved. If I have any public comment on this particular item of business? Nope. Okay, city?
Okay, this one is the last ordinance with the Johns Pass Village Activity Center area. So you can see on this map, this kind of hot pink area is C2. It's a boardwalk district. So this would no longer be used since everything would be rezoned, that's C1 zoning district. So as you can see in, let's see, starting on page 69 of your packet, it would just be deleting that whole C2 Johns Pass Marine Commercial Boardwalk area down in Johns Pass, and then just renaming it as reserved.
Okay, so basically just taking an eraser to that one. All right, any questions, motions?
I got a question. I was too busy flipping through my pages. Where is C2 designated?
C2, let me see if we have a.
Boardwalk.
It's a boardwalk area.
Just a boardwalk area?
Yeah, I can show you, this is the best map. So it's this hot pink area, so along the boardwalk. So that would no longer be used since everything in this area would be rezoned to C1. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't need that C2. So it's basically putting it on reserve, and then in the future, if we ever needed to use it, it would be open.
Okay, so it's still putting it within the C1 category?
Yes, so it would be rezoned, the previous ordinance rezones that area, everything that's C2. It's really, C2 is only right here in the whole entire city. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't need that zoning district anymore since now everything would be zoned C1.
And that was considered the boardwalk district, one of the six?
Right.
Wasn't it?
Yeah. By approving the first one, we've erased the need for this one, pretty much. Right?
Yep. And the boardwalk area is still within the Appendix D. It's a little confusing. It's a lot of moving things around, and all the character districts are accounted for in that Appendix D. We just have no need for that zoning district.
Because it's going to be considered the boardwalk district?
It'll be considered the C1 Johns Pass.
Activity Center Boardwalk District. Yeah.
Got it. Don't need a motion.
Any more discussion?
Is there any more discussion on that after our question was asked and answered? Okay, then we need a motion.
Then I make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-12, amending C2 to reserve.
All right, we've got a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-12, amending C2 to reserve. We have a second?
Second.
Got a second, thank you, Mr. Mar. We'll call the roll, please.
I'm sorry, who would, who seconded?
Mr. Mar?
Yes.
Sorry, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mar?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes, that one passed, thank you very much. Item E on the agenda, Ordinance 2024-13, C3 to be consistent with Madeira Beach, I forgot what the T stands for.
The Town Center.
Town Center, thank you. I always call the one, I want to call that Marina District, sorry, with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. Anybody from the public like to come up and use your three minutes to speak about this particular agenda item, please step forward. Okay, city staff, please.
Okay, thank you. So you've seen this before at a discussion, I believe, last meeting, or possibly the meeting before. So this is basically looking at our different zoning categories that were touched in the Madeira Beach Town Center, Activity Center. With any Activity Center land use at the county, it has to have a special area plan. We've seen this with Johns Pass Village. So Madeira Beach Town Center is also an Activity Center and has a corresponding special area plan. Within that special area plan, there are specific intensities, densities, as well as impervious surface ratios that were never codified into the land development regulations. So this is really putting them, those intensities, densities, impervious surface ratios into the land development regulations, and then also noting that the Activity Center land use at the county in the planned redevelopment mixed use locally with the comprehensive plan as, here we can scroll down to the ordinance, it changes. And the definitions, purpose, and intent. So in this section, it references the comprehensive plan as well as the countywide plan and those land uses, so just putting in those planned redevelopment mixed use, that's what we call the Town Center locally on the comprehensive plan, and then stating that that's an Activity Center with the county, county's plan, including townhouses as a permitted use. And then we do have one recommendation that would be a change, just to read similar to that Ordinance 2024-09, the Appendix D, so it's, reads the same way. Instead of just open rooftop uses, for it to read as open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit. So that would be the only change that staff would be recommending from what was in the packet. Other than that, you've seen this at our previous discussion, just calling out that planned redevelopment mixed use, and the intensities, densities. And also in the special area plan, it discussed the standards for the height, so putting that as well in land development regulations. And that is all.
All right. Anyone have any questions?
So this is now the Town Center, which is where we are, and it's going to be doing the same thing kind of as Johns Pass Activity, where we're combining all of the existing zoning areas, creating one Madeira Beach Town Center, and then we're going to be splitting them up as to what different designations are like at Johns Pass.
So they're already zoned, you can kind of see this. This is from the special area plan, from the Madeira Beach Special Area Plan for Town Center. So you can see there's different character districts similar to what we've done in Johns Pass Village Activity Center, these character districts, I should have this page side by side, but I can't. So you can see there's different zoning districts, so we are not rezoning anything in this, but you can see, let's see, this one is C3. So all this red is at C3 right here. And then if you go back up to this map with the character districts, which is adopted in like the comprehensive plan, you can see that that C3 zoning district hits a few different character districts. So just putting those standards that were in the special area plan, writing it into the land development regulations. Say, live in the comprehensive plan essentially through the special area plan, but just bringing them over into the land development regulations. So it's, everything's consistent.
So for, for example, let's say you have a C3 property that's in the commercial core character district in the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, your height limit would be three stories from base flood elevation. So, but your property would still be zoned C3, we're just putting the development standards that are referenced in the special area plan force the zoning district into our land development regulations in our Code of Ordinances. So we're not doing any map changes or anything, zoning map stays the same in Town Center, it's just, just referencing the character districts and the existing zoning that's on the ground.
Good.
Well, will this one be the new map, then?
No, so this is already adopted. This was adopted, I believe, in 2009, actually. So this, this right here, that's on the screen, this, and then the next page, pages 88 and 89 of your packet, those are two pages from the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. So if you remember, we had, when we were going through the Johns Pass Village Activity Center, we had this corresponding document, I think it was like 70 pages, there was a special area plan. That's what this is, but it's for this area in Madeira Beach. So this is the Town Center, the Madeira Beach Town Center. So Madeira Beach Town Center has, also has a special area plan, these are just two pages from that document. And we showed you the full document last, I believe it was last Planning Commission, but this is really the specifics of the density, floor area ratio, impervious surface ratio, and then the height that were, their standards that were written into the special area plan, they were never carried over and written to the land development regulations. So we've seen this inconsistency, and so now we're bringing it over into our land development regulations, the zoning. Yeah. They're both governing documents. The special area plan was adopted when it was changed, when this land area was changed to Activity Center back in 2009, I believe. It just wasn't put into the land development regulations.
Okay. Makes sense. Anyone else?
This is a little specific, but the, the commercial core and transition district maximum height, we only say stories above base flood? Was there a reason to leave out a specific height?
I don't know. I couldn't really speak to that, that's just how it's written. Right now, we refer to it as height above the design flood elevation. Back then, they had stories, I think in some districts previously, there was height and stories, and then you saw in our, in our Appendix D, we included those stories as well, just to be a little bit more specific. But this only has the stories written into the special area plan. And like I stated before, it is a governing document, this was adopted back in '09, there was an amendment in 2014, but this is a, a document that it lives within kind of like the comprehensive plan, so it's already adopted. So we're not asking to change any of these standards.
It's just spelling them out.
Yeah.
Okay. So weird inconsistency, I guess, but.
Yeah.
From 2009, so.
Yeah.
And the main thing it would lead to by not pulling it into the land development regulations would be like, you know, six, seven years, 12 years down the road, when you have new people here who don't know the history, they would just go to municide and look at our LDRs and follow that. Now we're closing the gap so that it's all in one location, you're not having to look at multiple documents. Makes it easier for, for us, the staff, as well as anybody who's scrolling through the municide.
The amount of overlaying of this location is kind of wild.
So we're just trying to make it easier and everything to be consistent.
So you didn't have to refer back and forth? All right, anymore?
And then I just wanted to remind you that we wanted to change that on, oh, I have the wrong section.
110-319, parentheses 11, to read open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
Yes, thank you, Tom.
We would like that included in the motion as well as staff recommendation to adopt the ordinance.
Well, if we're adding that in, couldn't you add in a, the footage? I'm just asking, I mean, you know, if we're, we're making an addition to it, so.
To change this document would, so we're not asking to change the special area plan, we're just changing the land development regulations to reflect the standards that are in the special area plan.
So if you add something different than what's in the special area plan, you're going to create an inconsistency, which is just the opposite of what we're trying to accomplish is to narrow it down, make sure there was no inconsistencies. So if you, if you address height by foot, how high it'd be by foot, but at the special area plan does it by stories, you create an inconsistency. And so we're, we don't, we don't want you to add anything that would create a further inconsistency.
So the only addition is basically a little bit more of a clarification?
Yes, and just reflecting what's, what was already adopted years ago.
Yeah, the revised special area plan would require a comprehensive plan amendment, which then would need to be reviewed by the county and state and a bunch of other agencies. So it'd be a very long process, as we've learned with the Johns Pass Village Activity Center Plan that we adopted earlier in the year. So it would be like a similar process to that. So these ordinances just basically take exactly what's been adopted and puts it word for word in, in the existing zoning, so.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-13, making C3 to be consistent with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, including the recommendation, staff recommendation to amend Section 110-319, parentheses 11, to state open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
That worked? Okay, so we have a motion, now we need a second.
I second that.
All right, got a motion and a second? Any questions about the motion? Everybody clear on what the motion is? We'll call the roll.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mar?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Nice work. Item F, Ordinance 2024-14, C4, to be consistent with Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. I see a pattern forming here. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this particular agenda item, please step forward to the podium and use your three minutes as you see fit. Seeing none, city staff, please.
So this looks very similar to what we just saw. Staff would be recommending one change, which we went over in the C3. So if you look at page 95 of your packet, instead of, in Section 110-349, the special exception uses, changing seven to read open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit. That would be the only change that we would be recommending.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the city? Any other questions for the city? Looks pretty familiar. None? You've already got it figured out, so you might as well do it again.
I can do it again. Well rehearsed. I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-14, making C4 to be consistent with Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan, and including the staff recommendation to change Section 110-349, parentheses seven, to state open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
Okay. We have a well-crafted motion. We'll need a second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Marr, thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. The last item of new business is ordinance 2024-15, R3, to be consistent with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. Anyone from the public like to speak on this agenda item, please step forward and use your three minutes as you need to. Thank you, sir.
Tom Edwards, District 1. Just my suggestions again, especially with R3. Here you're talking about residential area and looking at what you did with the center lane when you were talking about you could have people that could rent rooms in the center lane, have, have something going at West Events, bring back 75 people for rooftop activity. There's nothing in there that talks about having management on staff at the time that they're having rooftop activity. And here, here you're creating noise in a primarily residential area where you're going to have the complaint. This is one thing that you should look at making an exception on. So again, the noise is going to be the issue and also the music with amplified music or live bands, and that's what people are going to be doing when they're coming back from West Events and partying up on that rooftop. And again, they need to have management on top that can be in control and, and try to regulate that so you're not having complaints from the neighborhood. And I, I just don't think that was considered in the past.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
Which is the R3?
R3 is, is along the beach side of Gulf Boulevard and along 150th, and there's a little bit right here near us at City Hall. The inland side is mostly either C3 or C4. I think the, the center lane should be C3 retail, commercial.
Well, I'm just wondering about, you know, where we're moving this R3 in the Town Center.
Oh, so the properties that are R3 in the Town Center are the condo buildings along 150th and then the condo buildings along the beach. It, it just references, it doesn't rezone or change it. It's just basically just referencing the development standards from the special area plan. In some cases, they're actually more restrictive than what's normally allowed in R3.
So am I understanding right now rooftop uses are permitted?
Correct.
Yeah, we don't have any regulation.
Rooftop, rooftop uses are permitted without any going through a special exception use or anything.
Okay. So this at least puts it under the special exception use category.
Yes, and this would be all R3, not just those that are in this Madeira Beach Town Center area, which would be this area over here.
Any R3 then?
It would be all R3.
At least takes it a little further step.
Yes, and then like we stated, I stated earlier, the noise ordinance will be going to BOC workshop to discuss specifically open rooftop uses. So talking about that at the workshop and then seeing if there would be any changes to that, what that would look like will come later.
Okay.
And then we would also be asking the same amendments that we discussed previously, just so everything would read exactly the same. So on page 110 of the packet, Section 110-229 would read open rooftop, oh, 110-229, and then that subsection four would read open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace use if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I guess my thing is in terms of like townhouses. So a townhouse is a single unit, but if you've got a eight-bedroom townhouse and they go up on the roof, and, and that's where I think Tom's concern is. And, and truthfully, I agree, you know, in terms of a one unit, you know, and it, it's going down a slippery slope. You know, if they've got eight bedrooms and they go up on the top and they're partying and they've just been doing that, it's just, um, I, I just think it's kind of a open-ended deal.
Right now, it is an allowed use without going through any, any hearings. This allows at least one hearing through the special magistrate and then reviewing those 10 criteria. And we can pull up that criteria.
No, that's right. That's what I forgot. So by putting it in as a special use, then it's going to, then it has to be reviewed. Further down the line, we can get more stringent on it.
Yes, this would be more stringent on, on those uses if it's, if it's open to more than one unit. So say if you have a condo building that has, or a small multifamily that has like, you know, four units, five units, they have one open area that's open air, that would have to go through the special exception. Because we understand that there are areas, Madeira Beach is small, everything's tight and next to each other. So even in C3, R3, you might be next to a single-family residence, you might be next to a duplex. It just, you know, lot by lot can be different. So Andrew's pulling up that special exception, those standards and requirements. So that's in Section 110-124B, and there's 1 through 10 there. And that four reads that the use will be compatible with adjoining development and proposed character of the district where it is to be located.
So right now, we got nothing. And this is adding that extra layer to be reviewed.
And this month at the BOC workshop, we'll be discussing, because we're revising, needing, going to need to revise alcohol and noise ordinance and, and things like that, we, if we're revising for Johns Pass, really, we could revise it for other zoning districts too at the same time and just do a full cleanup of, of the code. But, I mean, that's up to the board to kind of give us direction on that, but it, we're definitely starting to, going to start the process of going through that and, and we can definitely like clean up certain sections or ref, or, but we have to do these changes first so we can be able to like work through the other parts of the code later on.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think as long as we're, from a zoning perspective, I think what we're doing today is fine, but just hearing this, you know, being voiced a couple of times, I, as long as whenever y'all are, when we're kind of done here and then y'all are kind of pulling your own thing together and just how that points back to the zoning code and whatever recommendations are made for that workshop or who needs to put that in the noise ordinance. I mean, I just want to say, I think it's worthwhile to draft something up.
And I think we, as Planning Commission members, have the right to go to the Board of Commissioners meetings and voice that concern that's been expressed to us here, right? So that they can take it under consideration at their workshop and when they finally vote on it, on how that ordinance is going to be amended for, for noise and use and things like that.
Okay? Very good.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2024-15, R3, to be consistent with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Activity Project.
Special Area Plan?
Area Plan.
You knew that. We knew that. Okay. You have a motion.
We need to pick up that Section 110-229, print four also. It was a recommendation to change that to open rooftop balcony and elevated terrace uses if commercial use or access, or, I'm sorry, or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
You're, go, go for it, man.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion. The motion is to approve ordinance 2024-15, R3, to be consistent with the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan as presented with the amendment to Section 110-229, special exception uses, parent four, open rooftop uses, balconies, and terraces if commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
Elevated terrace uses.
Elevated terrace, thank you. Let me restate that then. To amend 110-229, special exception uses, uses to open rooftop terraces, open rooftop uses, elevated terraces, and balconies if for commercial use or accessible to more than one temporary lodging, vacation rental, or residential unit.
Is that your motion, Mr. Dillon?
Yes, that's my motion.
So now we have the motion. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Perfect. We're clear on the motion, everyone. Thank you. It does get a little bit cumbersome sometimes. Okay, so please call the roll.
Commissioner Dillon?
Yes.
Commissioner LaRue?
Yes.
Commissioner Marr?
Yes.
Chairman Wykoff?
Yes.
Carries.
Motion passes. Thank you. No items of old business that I can tell. Any administrative staff presentation? I see nothing on the agenda, so I'm assuming there's none. And then Section 8 here, Planning Commission Discussion, A, Plan Development Zoning. What do we got?
Okay, so I'll open this up. The PD or Plan Development Zoning District in our land development regulations has some inconsistencies that should be resolved. So commis, um, community development staff has gone through the Plan Development section in the code, as you can see in your packets, starts at page 122 and goes to page 130. So anything that's underlined would be adding, anything that's strike through would be removing. And we can go through this. You'll definitely see this again as a discussion item to get more input from Planning Commission. It'll also go to BOC for their input as well before we move forward with any recommendation. So say the, the biggest changes would be referring to the comprehensive plan, how it's supposed to be referred to. Some of this area is, or some of these, some of this paragraph is cut and put into the next section. Really, in this first section is talking about what is P, what is a PD zoning, saying that it has to meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan and the countywide plan, and then including the PD zoning is allowed in the following future land use categories of our comprehensive plan. So it's pretty straightforward, that first section. And then the next section would be the use is permitted in dimensional regulations, talking about the flexibility for setbacks and heights. And we also looked at a few different cities' plan development sections in their code, referred to that as well. And then talking about the comprehensive plan, making sure that it is compatible with the comprehensive plan. And then you can see this, it's on page 123, the top of that is really a cut and paste from what was, what's currently in our code. And then going through to one, Section 110-388, the application, just discussing that it has to go to Planning Commission, BOC, as well as the development agreement process. I think currently, there's not much discussion on the development agreement that it's required with a PD.
We, as shown here, we also had language that it needs to meet Forward Penelis's county, countywide rules if it goes, does the alternative temporary lodging use standards. So we just want to make sure it properly references that because it has additional criteria that would have to be met.
Yes, and we have that in, in the other sections in the code. If you use the alternative temporary lodging use standards, that it has to follow those rules that, that's in the countywide rules. And then talking about the narrative and then what's included in the submittal, just kind of updating those, that process.
Can I just ask you a quick question? How different is Forward Penelis's rules compared to what we currently have?
If you use the alternative temporary lodging use standards, those are different standards than what's allowed by right. You have to have a development agreement to use those standards, even if you're not doing a rezoning to a PD.
Okay.
One of the things is your parking is included in the floor area ratio, which is very different, but that's what's in the countywide rules, so that's what you have to go by. In the development agreement, there's things like if.
You mean part, like elevated parking or ground level parking?
Um, it's elevated parking. I can't remember exactly how it's worded.
That makes sense, okay.
But then, oh, here it is on the screen. Can make it a little larger. You zoom up. So let's see, concurrency management standards, so here in C, comply with hurricane evacuation plans. So all of this has to be in the development agreement. Shall prepare a legally enforceable mandatory evacuation closure covenant stating that the temporary lodging use will be closed as soon as the hurricane watch, and then design considerations, mobility management provisions. Let's see. Just to meet, here are the maximums with the county, and then in our land development regulations, we also have the maximums in land development regulations as well as our comprehensive plans. So this is the maximum with the county. That isn't the maximums with us locally in Madeira Beach. And here are the design considerations. Have to be in the development agreement. It's the building design, elevations, facade treatments, entrance, porches, all of this, adjoining property use, site improvements, mobility management, and then there's operation, operating characters, characteristics and restrictions. So all of this has to be in here too.
Yeah, and another important thing, you can't convert it into residential dwelling units.
Right, there's a maximum occupancy by the owner.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. Seems to make sense.
Yeah. So we would imagine that if any PDs that are hotels would probably go this alternative temporary lodging use standard, so we just wanted to also include that in there so it's not missed in the future. Say if there's different staff in however many years, that, that, that's somewhere in this section that, hey, you still have to meet these requirements with the county.
Okay.
And let's see. So we went through all the requirements of what would be submitted for the application just based on what we see now, what we would want to see, the site data table showing all open space, the floor area, existing and proposed, so just making certain things a little bit more descriptive.
Right, right there, why did you cross out green space?
Uh, because we have open space in. Because we have open space in our definition section, 82-2, but it's not specifically green. So we have a definition for open space. It doesn't specify if it's green or not. I think retention sites can be, is also under the definition of open space, so.
Okay, so it's somewhere else. Yeah, so their green is still there, it's just somewhere else.
And then we have landscape requirements, and it states this, I think, a little bit later, probably on the same page. Yep, right here. That the landscape standards must be met at a minimum. There's some things that we removed, like the lighting design standards, typically at this, you know, and the signage standards. You typically wouldn't see that at the PD.
Typically, at the PD stage, you wouldn't see some of the level of detail of this stuff. So we wanted to just pull it out just so that it was kind of clear. And really, the plan that we end up seeing is really the nuts and bolts of what's going in there. And then once that's approved, the designer can feel comfortable moving forward with a full-blown design for all the other stuff.
Thanks, Marcy. Pregnancy brain.
One quick thing, because I know there's been kind of from various Planning Commission Board Commissioners, even residents, about kind of trying to make Madeira Beach more pedestrian-friendly. One thing we did change, let me just see, page, page 6 out of 9. So previously, it had a minimum of five-foot sidewalk, which is way too small. My FDOT usually does a minimum of six now. So, but we also had the language that we, if there's enough room, that we prefer 10-foot, which would be more like, like wide enough, like a multi-use path. So we wanted to kind of promote that and make sure when PDs do come in, they're putting in good pedestrian infrastructure to a higher standard. Because five-foot is kind of inadequate, so we wanted to fix that.
And then above that, I think most of it's just pretty standard of just how we, the building height, how we measure height, making sure that everything is consistent with the comprehensive plan, calling out, let me see what page it was at. Let's go back to four. Calling out in some of these areas, you know, in the site data table or within your submittal, including the standards, if there's any, you know, design standards of the previous zoning district before the PD rezoning. So just making sure that all of that's really clear in what we interpreted how this was supposed to be written, as well as, you know, the review with the Planning Commission, just making it a little bit more clear and cohesive. I think you see that as well with the BOC, and then including what Andrew just stated, that sidewalk width, set at five, making it six, and then 10-foot preferred. It's really just cleaning up this section, making sure everything is clear and consistent with comprehensive plan and the rest of the Land Development Regulations.
So the progress would be, we would see it, and then it would be refined further, and then the Board of Commissioners would see it, and the Board of Commissioners would be basically almost the final plans.
With the PD, yes. So currently, how, say if a PD came in, the Planning Commission would see it as a rezoning, similar to what we saw today. You would also see a development agreement, which is a contract between the city and the developer. So you'd see two things. And then if that was approved, while we would get a recommendation, that would go to BOC for two, two readings is typically. And then this would more than likely trigger the site plan section in the code. So you would see it again after. So like with the Sanderling, when you saw the site plans, you would, I would be shocked if you didn't see this again. It's something that would be a PD would most likely trigger that site plan.
Right, okay. So it'll be, and I'm just trying to think in terms of, before it would go to BOC, it would be thoroughly vetted, you know, by us and by the public and all of that?
Yes, they would have, they have to do a neighborhood meeting. They have to now, say if something comes in right now, the PD, we wouldn't be changing that. Has to be a neighborhood meeting, and then it comes to Planning Commission. You'd also see the development agreement, and then it goes to the Board of Commissioners. And then when you see the site plan, that'd be later on, once they were allowed that rezoning, they work on the plans, you would see further detail. They would have to do another neighborhood meeting, and then it would come to Planning Commission for a vote. And then we would see the building plans after that. So it's a long process.
Okay. I mean, but it's very good that you're getting it lined out completely. So here it is, folks. If you want to do a PD, this is a process you have to go through.
Yes, and right now, there's a few sections that aren't very specific, aren't very clear. So we're just cleaning, cleaning that up and making sure that it references a comprehensive plan correctly.
Thank you.
It's also the, a PD zoning cannot give you higher standards, like more intensity, more intensity than the comprehensive plan can. So this is just making it clear, you can't go over those standards in the comprehensive plan, no matter what. So really outlining that whole process.
All righty. Any other questions? Good? Good. We'll be seeing this again. All right, the next one we're gonna have you talk to us about is the floodplain amendments.
Okay. Marcy's gonna help me with the floodplain amendments. So we were contacted from the Florida Department of Emergency Management, FDM, in conjunction with FEMA. This is who vets and reviews our local floodplain codes. So they contacted us that we needed some changes in our code. So this will be, when this comes to you for recommendation, it'll be three different ordinances. So we have the definition section in the code. We'll be updating Chapter 14, which is the technical codes and standards, and then Chapter 94, which is the floodplain management. So basically, in Section...
Real quick, what triggers this contact is because the new Florida Building Code is issued. So once that's issued, we have to properly incorporate that into our LDRs. So that's kind of what initiates this process. So in three years, we'll go through this again.
I know we went through this, I think, last when we had our map changes back in 2020, 2021, I believe. So in Section 82-2, this is where we have all of our definitions in the code of ordinances. So it's pretty lengthy because we just brought everything over. But you really want to look at the highlighted sections. In essence, it's just bringing all the definitions from Chapter 94 and throwing them in 82, making sure that they're consistent. We have some definitions in Chapter 82-2, and we have some in 94. So just putting them all in the same section. And some of those definitions, we also refer to in that Chapter 14 and throughout the code. So if it's in Chapter 82, it just makes it a little bit more clear. Here's all of our definitions. It's all the same. We don't have any inconsistencies, because right now, there's a few inconsistencies, I feel like, on repeat. So we're just cleaning that up.
We're keeping the adult bookstores?
There's several definitions that we've come across that we thought we probably could get rid of, but yeah.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure when that was put in, but there's quite a few if you look through it, so.
It's very in-depth and specific on some very interesting things, for sure.
Have we seen any major changes to the community rating system since...
We are still waiting for...
Risk Rating 2.0 came out.
We're still waiting for our rate back. We, that was about like a year ago.
As I understood it, that got kind of, no pun intended, it got watered down a bit. The community rating system did with the Risk Rating 2.0 because of all the new mapping features that are going lot by lot, instead of laying a blanket over an entire floodplain area.
With your insurance rates, definitely.
So does the community rating system really have any, does it still have any strength to it?
You could get a discount. I think there's other areas that you could get higher discounts. Marcy might be able to speak a little better.
Yeah, and this has been a big topic for discussion. I know Lisa Foster at the county level's really been kind of, you know, spearheading a lot of information and trying to kind of tackle Risk Rating 2.0 with the FEMA officials and how it's being leveraged. What we're finding is there's other ways you can get discounts on your flood insurance. And you will get whichever one is the highest, and you'll get only that one. So sometimes you won't see the CRS discount because there's another discount, and I don't know what those are, but there's another discount that outweighs what you would get because we're, you know, a seven or a six or whatever the community is.
That makes sense. So the individual site could have its own mitigating factors that would warrant a higher discount than the community rating system would give?
That is my understanding correct. And I will say that I am trying to dive a lot deeper into it because I'm a little curious about the ins and outs of the insurance part of it.
Okay.
And the county does have representatives that will help property owners for free, if you call it.
I would just hate to hamstring our residents with trying to conform the community rating standards that don't really do them any good. Right?
Yeah, and the higher regulatory standards as well that we have in Chapter 14 too. So what I was saying previously is, so every five years, we have our, not the annual, but the review, basically, of our CRS. And we submitted ours last, it's been about a year, actually. But we're still waiting to receive our points from that. So we'll see when that comes back.
Yeah, and I do think you're touching on something that coastal communities are going to be struggling with is where is that line of, you know, trying to get as much CRS points because we do, we are limited, you know, it's barrier island. So you're hitting on the topic that's very much at the forefront of our conversations as well.
Yeah. Also, the new CRS, well, not so new anymore, the CRS manual that was published in 2017 makes it a lot harder for barrier islands to get points.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And then when the Risk Rating 2.0 came out, it changed everything as well. And sometimes those two don't meet, and they're a little bit disparate.
It's definitely making it harder for barrier island communities.
So you educated me, though, thank you, about that you could get one or the other. So that's good to know. So we should, you know, try to maintain consistency with what FEMA is requiring. Because I know Penales County, and of course, us being a barrier island even more, you know, we get hit harder with the ability to get those discounts because we get smacked around. But if we can't maintain any of those discount levels, you could run into a situation where you can't actually get flood insurance. And that would really have a bad effect on our property values and, you know, the overall quality of life around here.
Penales County is, I believe, a three? Yeah. So, and we are a seven. So one is the best.
Yeah, we're on the wrong side of the spectrum, right, right.
But saying that, Penales County has a lot of areas that don't touch the water. They have a lot of parks. They have a lot of areas that they can receive a lot of points, where we just don't have the land area for that. Just looking through that manual. So it doesn't work in our favor, definitely.
So the yellow are all the ones that are either going to be changed or eliminated?
Yes, so anything that has a strike through, that's removing, and then underline will be the new. And we received this straight from FDM, FEMA.
Yeah, so we're still going through it as well, so.
Okay. So, but then we'll see this again?
Yes, you'll see this again. So this is just putting it on your radar, start to look at it.
So we can, in other words, we can take this home and decipher it, and then we'll be seeing it again.
Yes, you'll be seeing it again, definitely. And like I stated before, it'll be three different ordinances. So you'll have the definition section, which is pretty lengthy. If I can get past it.
So am I reading this right? They're changing the categories too, from A, AE, and V to different naming convention?
No, where are you saying?
Oh, coastal high hazards, or, you know, the CHA, CHHA, is that, you got coastal A in the definitions?
When the new maps came out, they defined coastal A communities. So I don't know if this is the first time that we're getting it into our code. Is that for the coastal high hazard area? Or, it shouldn't be changing. Where, they've added, so some of the areas, even if you're in an AE 11, that AE 11 may fall into a coastal A zone, which is treated like a velocity zone. So I'm not sure if we're just better describing that. Like, for instance, most of Bay Point falls into the coastal A zone and is treated like a velocity zone.
I don't know of any changes to the actual map.
Yeah, exactly.
I think it's just further defining definitions.
Oh, I see where, yeah.
To what they have, yeah.
I see where, see this page.
Page 138 of the packet.
Yes, I think they've done it to include...
All right, so we need to, we need to read this, learn it, love it, and we'll see it again. Okay? Anymore on that?
Just one quick thing, too, as you guys digest this. And I know that there's a lot of talk around what TI is doing for, you know, elevating the houses and the roads and stuff. Just bear in mind that the difference between the use of structural fill and non-structural fill, because our community is entirely on deep foundations. So none of our houses rely, none of our newer homes rely on fill to support their building. It may support their parking slab, but it can go away and their building stays in place. So just as you digest it, make sure that you differentiate between structural and non-structural. That seems to be one of the bigger confusions I'm running into with talking to people, so.
Okay. All right. Good for that one?
We have just one last quick item. Just wanted to remind people that we're in the process of updating our master plan. And if you scan the QR code or go to our city website, we have a survey available, which is... And also a public comment map. And as you can see, people have already added comments to it.
So we would encourage everybody to do that and pass along the news to fill out both the survey as well as the map, and that's found on our website. And then we have some other documents of the previous master plan and the workshop and some handouts. Here you can see the, it's kind of embedded, I don't know why it's like that. It's embedded in the website. This is the survey. It's pretty quick to fill out. We've been getting some good responses. And then also filling out this public comment map, and that'll be essential for when Kimley Horn's putting together the master plan.
We also, city staff and Kimley Horn attended Final Fridays down in John's Pass. And we got a lot of good feedback from both residents and visitors. Also had a nice poster board. A lot of families were there, and a lot of people were excited about it. So it was good getting feedback and kind of hearing how people feel about the city and want to see how, where it goes in the future.
So just spread the news. The more feedback, the better.
You bet. All right. Anybody got anything else about that? Want to hit, you want to hit the next item, the master plan, which you just alluded to?
That's it? That's all we had for the master plan? That's all that we had for the master plan?
Oh, perfect. Well, that was quick.
Just spread the news and fill out the surveys and the, and the ma- Just spread the news and fill out the surveys and the maps, and we'll definitely let you know when the next public workshop will be. We don't have a date yet.
Okay. We don't have on here any planning commission discussion, in addition to that, or we do have it, but is there anything in addition you guys wanted to bring up or bring to the city's attention? Nope? All right, quiet group tonight, good. I like it. So that means our next meeting is scheduled for September 9 at 6:00 PM, right here. I didn't see anything else that we needed to hand out, so we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.